Okay, thank you. It's not quite seven. Okay, it is now seven. Good evening. Welcome to the Special Committee of the Whole for Monday, April 17th, 2023. I will call the meeting to order and conduct the roll call. Let's see, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Carter, Counselor McCabe, Counselor Norris is on via Zoom, Counselor Piazza, and Counselor Sheffield are in attendance. So we have a quorum. New business or referrals, what I want to do is the city budget presentations first to get extra people out of the, out of the room. So with that, Linda, let's bring you up first for Human Resources. It's on page twenty, it starts on page 24, but the budget actually is on 26.
Okay.
Okay, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Okay, so this is the biggest budget of the entire city, right? It's about five lines. So, very simple. So the first account is office expense and advertising, and that is down about $1,200 from last year. Again, the office supplies, they're, they're, don't really cost a lot except for employees' folders, which are very expensive. Last year, we were going to look for a replacement of a laptop and a docking station, and we did not do that, and IT found us something that we could use, so that has been taken out. And we may need a new printer this year, which is why that's in, because we have two pretty old printers. So we just left the 600 in, just in the event that we do have to replace that this year. The next account is professional development, and that is up $175 from last year. And the items that are in that one are Skill Path, Star Membership, which is training. And this year, we added an enterprise one, so that last year was $700. And by, for two, this year, we did one regular personal one, and then one enterprise one, so that we can assign different trainings to different people. Sure memberships, there are two for Director of HR and HR Journalists, that's 500. And Johani is going to hopefully test this year for her SHRM certification. The 410 is there, but is up only if she passes it. Otherwise, we don't pay for taking the tests and not passing it. Employee engagement, we did a lot of good things this year, I think. People seem to be, for the most part, motivated and appreciative of what we did, so we kept the same amount for this year, so that we can continue to do that. We have an events committee that does a lot of good work to try to engage our different folks, especially when we, we had a barbecue this year that was fantastic, because we got all the ops people, it was great. It was a great turnout. A lot of the operations people came over here in the park, and it was, it was wonderful. Training and management, again, $2,000, and that is for all the programs we have to bring in-house, such as Reasonable Suspicion, Conflict Management, Mutual Respect. So we kept that at the same amount as last year. Next account is contracted services, and that is down $7,100 from the previous year. Let's see, Employee Assistance Program, our EAP, we pay for all 200-plus employees, and that stayed the same. Annual maintenance fee for our printers, 400. Incentive Solutions is our rewards and a recognition program, and all we pay for there is for the HR Department, which went up, let's see, it's $700 for this year. And then we have our attorney fees, which we, that's one of the reasons why the amount got knocked down a little bit, is because we didn't use up as much as we thought we were last year. And so we were able to remove $3,000 and kept a $5,000 amount in for this year. And by law, we have to have employment posters posted throughout the buildings, the different facilities. So we found a service to do that for us, and they upgrade it. As soon as something changes, they send us the upgrades. And that was 600. I think that was down probably from the year before that. It used to be 900. And then our HRIS system is still in the process of being built from, within Springbrook. And so we, with the amount of labor that we have in the HR Department, we cannot keep up with the work that we have. So if we are to do this correctly, we will need some extra help, and I think I talked about this before. So we did knock it down from 10,000 to 6,000, and I got a good price for labor from a temp agency. Not sure we're going to go that route, but just in case we have to, we put that in. And then, let's see. And the HR, about 9,600 is in addition to last year's for the HR Department salaries. FICA goes up also, as you know, and the benefits. I get those numbers from Ron. So they went up a little bit on some and went down on a couple of them, of others. And so the total increase was 5,107, which brought us to a 1.4% increase over last year.
Okay, questions from the council? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that detailed report. I had a couple of questions that you already answered in that explanation, so.
All right.
The only question I have is, how many contracts do we have up for negotiation this coming fiscal year?
Right now, we're doing six.
So we have six. And you think that the amount for legal fees is adequate for what you're?
For what comes out of the HR Department, yes. What comes out of the rest of the departments, I'm sure they're keeping track of their own, but yeah, HR itself, not that much.
You feel confident about the amount that you have?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments on HR? Okay, thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
Just a quick question. What time employee, I guess that salary, well, went from 225, 332 to 234, 790, is that 3%?
234. I'm sorry, Paul, I don't see what you're asking. Under, under the HR Department, the salaries? Oh, the 234, 969. Right, it is not exactly 3%. I have, one of our HR journalists is phenomenal, she's just a phenomenal employee. She goes the limit, she's learned so much, she's the one that's going for her certification. And she is, right now, at 55,000, very underpaid. So I had a meeting with the mayor to talk about this, because I do not want to lose this person. She's phenomenal. And he agreed that we were able to give her, put her up to 60,000 in July.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, thank you, Linda. Up next is Mary Parks and Rec, and that's on page 82. Starts on 82, the actual budget. Comes in around 86, 87, somewhere along in there.
Eighty, yeah, page 82, was the summary part.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present my budget, as you all, some of you recall, is in two parts. We have the recreation side, and then we have the maintenance side. So I'll, I'll do the recreation side, and then go questions, and then maintenance, if that works. Okay. So our recreation budget is up 3 point, sorry, 3.82%. Areas of increase in the budget that you all have is beach operations, salaries for summer beach operations. All our, there's only one position at the beach that makes minimum wage, and that's our gate personnel. Everybody else is above minimum wage. Lifeguards increased, you know, they used to, they were at 16, now we're up to 18, to make that differential to, from the minimum wage. It is staying as, it's staying current with the goal of getting 10 lifeguards. We've always had a goal to always have 10 lifeguards to facilitate the operations of the beach. So there's a significant increase in that line item of $14,700. But I have a decrease in playground, because we've going, we're going to one site. We normally had two sites of playground. In the past, we had Washington Park, and we had, I want to say, well, it was West Side when we had it, now it's Thames River Magnet School. But due to the nature of weather, it's our rain site, and it's our hot weather site. They do have air conditioning in the new school now, they have plenty of space. So we've decided to consolidate into one location for summer playground. With the kids going to the beach every week, and having that opportunity to be in the outdoor space there, my playground director felt it was, it was a nice option to move everything up to the school. The other area increase is oper, is under office supplies and advertising. We do a, we do a monthly, no, not, sorry, we do every two years, two, two times a year, we do a summer and spring, and then a fall and winter brochure. And the printing costs, we print it and then we mail it, is getting extremely high. It was seven, so we were looking at, we had already done our February one when we were doing the budget, our, our, our spring and summer ones, so we're looking to, when we do our fall and winter one, we're going to have a survey in there, how people find out about our programs. And if we can see that we can drop that expense, we will. But we're also going to need that money to do the brochure for the fall. We also have our rec desk software, which is our online registration software that we use, that we have a yearly fee for, and that goes up every year, about $200. So we were lower than we should have been this year, so we wanted to get that up to where we were able to, to cover our costs with that. And the only other area is contractual services. Again, this is under our program in events. That's where, like, summer concerts, our karate program, our golf lessons. We added a summer, no, after-school soccer program this year, which wasn't budgeted for, but we always have funding budgeted for new programs and ideas or new events. So we put in the soccer program, and then we continue to add the, the, keep the dollars for the events and special events. So that's where the increase for that budget comes from.
Okay, questions on this budget? Say again?
Are you doing it separate? You doing parks and?
Yes, so, yeah. So, and, and then this budget, there's, so, I did, there's no adjustment currently right now, because one of the, 40% of my pay and 40% of Val's pay comes out of recreation, and because of her union contract being negotiated right now, I don't have an increase for her. Mine is that set at the 3% that the mayor asked us to come in at, at 40% here. It's at 60% in the, in the maintenance side.
Another question.
Counselor Carter, you have the floor.
And it's, again, this is about salary, and I think I said this last year, if not the year, the year before, that I just caught something. You said 3%.
Correct.
That the mayor asked you to.
Correct.
So this is my, this is my issue, and this was my issue last year and the year before, right? How many years do you have with, 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 with us?
Seventeen.
And how many years total experience with Parks and Rec?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, right. So it seems to me, right, and this is just sitting on the council the last two or three years, that we're incentivizing new employees and not looking out for everybody. And I said this last year, and I said this a year before. She has 30 years of experience, and she's being asked to get a 3% raise. I've done, I've done certain research, I didn't bring it with me, but there's, I don't see in any situation how, and what's your current salary, if you don't, it's all public record, but.
Ninety-five thousand.
Ninety-five, I don't see in any, in any way possible how she's not making $100,000 a year. And, and if it was somebody else that wasn't tied to the city, right? Because she has a commitment and a tie, and she's, she has a love for the city, they would have left a long time ago. We just had a director here that said that they didn't want their new employee to leave, so they're giving them $60,000 a year. How do we not get, have a director who has 30 years of experience that could leave us like that? And the only reason she doesn't leave us is because she has a commitment to the city. I think that's, that's.
Stick to the budget.
I can talk, I can say what I want to say. I can say what I want to say.
You need to stick to the budget.
If you call me out of order, call me out of order, but I can say what I want to say. Am I wrong, or am I?
You need to stick to the budget.
Is this not the budget?
Stick to your question or your comment about her budget.
Is this not the budget?
You were going on and on.
I'm going, no, I'm not. You don't like to hear what I'm saying. That's the thing.
Stick to the budget. Address the question.
No, I didn't have a question. I'm making a statement about the budget. If you let me finish, I'll get to my point. We have a mayor that has a 10% increase, okay, which he deserves. I agree, okay, I agree. But we have a director here that was asked to take a 3% raise, okay? I think we need to look out for the people that have deserved our community. I think it's unjust what we're doing here. And, and, and again, I think that goes back to the point of what I was saying before, is that if we're going to do this and just give people certain raises so they can stay or whatever, right? It leaves room for this. It leaves room for, okay, what are we doing here? Are we, are we, are we giving certain people raises, or are we not giving certain people raises? When we do what we're doing now, instead of having a step or a more formal process, it leaves questioning to what I'm saying now. This is the second or third year I'm saying in a row. There's no, there's no situation that I don't think anybody can tell me different, that she doesn't deserve more than a 3% raise, okay? And this is my third year in a row, and if anybody can tell me different, I, I want him to say it. I think that that's, it's, it's just, it's inappropriate what we do to the people who've, who have been committed to the city. And we're giving new people raises, that, that, people that are leaving, they stick around a year and they're leaving. It's, it doesn't make any sense to me, and I wonder what we're doing here. I'm done.
Thank you. So let me address something real quick. First of all, so for the union contracts, the union negotiates what their annual raises are going to be. And then in the past, we have mimicked that raise across the board to everybody. Everybody gets that, gets a similar raise, gets the same raise. In the last couple of years, I have increased it for the non-union employees, and that's why we're at 3%. In addition to that, Linda is in the process, at my request, to do a salary survey, so that we can evaluate each of the job positions to ensure that we are paying people, paying our department heads the correct salaries that they deserve. So that is something that is ongoing and is in progress. Okay, Deputy Mayor Depot, did I see your hand?
I was just going to ask, I think we had discussed, I was going to direct the question. Well, I don't know if it would be directed at Ron, but we had discussed that all the positions. A couple of years ago, you started evaluating the salaries of several positions, because it had been brought up that we didn't think that every position was being paid, like equitable, obviously, private sector versus public sector, there's always differences in benefits and pay, and there's certain perks that you get in either one. But I thought I remembered that we had discussed that, which you kind of just answered now. But I believe we have made changes to salaries, I think last year, based on doing a market study for certain positions, because we weren't paying anywhere near the amount for that, and I don't remember which, which position it was, but I think there was a position that we weren't paying near the same as, for example, private sector, so we weren't getting any candidates. And I know that the town has had that issue as well with salaries, that they, the salaries have not climbed the same as private industry, which was impacting our ability to hire. So I guess my question is, how, like, about how many positions are we looking at that salary comparison, and how many have we changed based on that?
Linda, could you come to the table? Could you address that point?
So we have approximately 55 non-union employees, both ops and in the city. And we just finished a, almost finished, a very comprehensive salary survey. And we are not complete with that yet, because it's very difficult to get apples to apples. So you really have to, to work at it until you feel comfortable with it. We hope to be done with that, hopefully by July. And then we'll be able to bring it to council to see how that goes, and whether, you know, it seems reasonable.
Counselor McCabe?
So with this sort of salary market study, do you do penetration bumps in salary in the middle of the year? So say we get this, and we determine that the market value for a position is higher than what we're paying, would we provide a, another bump at that time that's different from this?
Well, the mayor and I have talked about this for a few years now, about how to do it, what, you know, who to have us, have, help us, and then what to do about that. So we know that we're not going to be able to bump it, people up altogether one time. So it's going to be gradual over probably a few years. And, you know, hopefully, we'll be able to grab a good method that allows us to do that, where it's sort of placement in a grid, so you have different things that you're, that is looked at when you do this. This is going to be, it's been a lot, a lot of work, but I think it's going to be good once it's done. But I, it's not going to be, you know, you get $5,000 or you get $10,000, because that's where you need to be. It's going to be in smaller increments, I think, as we go along. That's kind of been the plan.
One of the things we're looking at, I'm going to do this, we have to look at the budgets. But one of the things we're looking at is, instead of taking this department head full and leaving this one down here, bring everybody up and phase it in till we get to the 100% number of whatever that salary should be. So that's one of the things that we're looking at. And we do have a company that's helping us look at this. So, once we get this information, I'll be coming to the council and explain to the council what our approach is, and then be asking for council input on that approach. So did that answer your question? Okay. Is your hand up?
Yeah, my mind's on a different topic.
Okay. Counselor Norris, you have the floor.
Regarding pay, I do appreciate what Councilman Harter is saying here. We've had multiple increases for some department heads over the past three years. We have had new hires in the past couple of years, which naturally loan itself to looking at pay and increasing pay. We've made some significant pay increases to some folks in my very short time here. I would venture to say, when we have a veteran that has worked for an agency for some 15 years, if I'm correct with that, Mary Hill, that that should be a priority. I can also venture to say, because what I heard tonight, which her pay was approximately $95,000, I'm not quite sure what salary survey you're looking at, but I can tell you, in our southeastern Connecticut region, it's 104. So she's a little shy. And I would venture to say, if we were to do some type of benchmarking like we did with economic development, it would probably be even higher. So while I get mince words here, and again, I talked about budgets and how to increase or decrease budgets, but it is my intention to make a motion, when it's appropriate or when I can, that the director of parks or beach and recreation should be a minimum of $104,000 effective July 1st of fiscal year 24. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Well, Stephen hadn't spoken, was his hand up?
I'm sorry. Counselor Sheffield?
Mary, I, I was, this is a little bit, we're going back to the
Yep.
actual numbers here. I saw, like I said, the decrease, again, for the summer playground and the increase in beach operations. Is that sort of by design, you're, you know, reducing expenses for the playground and increasing for the beach? Is that how you're setting that up for specific?
Well, so the decrease in playground is due to the fact that we don't need as many staff, because we don't have, we won't have two locations.
Okay.
So our staffing numbers have gone down at the playground site. The beach increase is based on the fact that we don't, our, our fee, our, what we, our rate of pace for our staff at the beach is higher than minimum wage. The lifeguards, we, we bring them in at $18. So, you know, take $18 times 40 hours, times 10 guards over the course of a 12-week period, it adds up. And so we, we just want, we haven't been using that much money over the course of the last two years, due to the fact that we're having a difficult time finding lifeguards. But I want to be able to have that there if we get all 10 lifeguards. So, and then that and supervisors, you know, we had some supervisors that were only making $19 an hour. They're going to supervise somebody who's making 18. So we kind of had to make some of those adjustments across the board. And it's something that's been progressively, I've been working with HR in the mayor's office with the minimum wage. This is the last year of minimum wage. It goes up to $15 an hour in June, but there's been a progression over the last five. And we've been kind of working to be that we would be okay when we got to this stage in regards to minimum wage being here and us making our beach staff a little more. I mean, lifeguards are, you know, first responders, they, they have a responsibility down there, so, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think it's per same numbers. I think I just wanted to reflect, and just, you can always round me out if I'm not on track here. So I, I just, just some clarification. So you said the one playground area was going to be over at Thames River?
Yes.
Okay, and that was more for, because they have air conditioning areas for the kids?
Yes, there's a few things. So when we are outside at Washington Park, if it, I have to try to be a weather person at 5:30 in the morning to find out if it's going to rain between the hours of eight and, 8:30 and 3:00, because that's where we send the children if it rains. And this past summer, we had some extremely heat, hot weather, so we had to do the same thing. So that's one of the factors that came into play. Plus, they, they have a beautiful facility up there now that we haven't had in the past, because we had a middle school as opposed to an elementary school, and it's a little more suited to what we do with the kids in the summertime. And they do also give us access to inside facilities. We have a cafeteria where they can sit and eat, as opposed to maybe on the grass. But we are going to facilitate using all the outside space that's up there. They have the field in the back. They have the playground. We're going to work on figuring out how to get some shade down, up there, because it is, some of the trees haven't matured enough to have enough shade, but that's something we will work at. But we just thought for operations, it would just be easier to have everybody in one location. And that one seems to suit all of the parameters of the program.
Well, I appreciate all your work that you do. My kids have been in these programs. I see it in some light, I see, kids should be outside, but then they will be outside. And in that, when we're talking, so I'm assuming that we have young, more younger children in the program than we do have older. Because for the elementary school, I was just kind of wondering, like, because it goes up to 14, I believe, right, still?
Correct. Correct.
So, how would they actually be occupied? You know, what kind of, you know, things are, are, do we invest money in the, into the older? Um, to me, I'm like, my heart goes to, my heart goes to a lot of kids, but I find our teens really kinda get displaced. I'm gonna have a lot of programs for them. So, I find in the parks and rec, you know, that, I mean, you know, is there some of these monies or in your works that, you know, well, we're gonna direct the teens to do certain kind of programs and that's where the money is being put into?
So, what we do, uh, with our, our barracuda group, which is our older kids, um, we try to work them with our minnows, or, and our snappers, our younger kids to kinda get them. We don't call it a counselor and training program, but we kinda get the kids that used to working with the kids. Like, we'll do story time and they may read to the kids, or we have a field trip and they may be their buddy. So, that way they can get used to that activity if they wanna come and work for us at fifteen.
Right, right.
They have some of that knowledge, they've gained it at the playground site. But, uh, some of our times, our barracudas is our biggest group and they're active as can be. They're on the basketball court, they're playing ball, they're playing knockout, they're doing a lot of activities, keeping themselves busy. You know, they relax, they're one of the few groups that they go to the beach and they're just sitting in the sand or playing in the water, you know, just relaxing. So, um, but we do try to encourage them to get involved with our younger groups. Our biggest groups are our snappers, Marlins and barracudas, our middle-aged groups.
And are you finding that the trips, because I know as the years went on, the trips have decreased?
Correct.
Um, I didn't, I'm sure that's probably due to monies, I'm not really sure if it's, you know, but funding for a lot of it and the bus and so forth and so on. Uh, is, are they, are the trips still the same amount, would you say, since the last couple of years? Or are they just decreasing over the years, less trips, less trips?
Obviously, we didn't do any trips in twenty-twenty when we held our program.
Right.
Um, the year before, we tried to, um, do one every week, but that, it does become financially, uh, financial burden on the parent. Because they, you know, we, we don't absorb that in our registration fee, they have to pay that. And bus, bus fees have, have, I had a, um, a fifteen thousand dollar bus, before I started, fifteen thousand dollars just for bussing. Then that, but that was a couple of years back when we used to bus the kids from Washington Park down to the beach. And I'm like, why don't we just have them drop off down there instead of driving? You know, there, it, there's still a park in the city of Groton. So, now we, the kids get transported on their beach day by their parent and picked up by their parents. So, that has enabled us to offer, um, to reduce that cost. And then the cost, so the, because then the cost isn't reflected back to the parent. I mean, our program is extremely inexpensive and it's three hundred dollars for an eight-week program. But we don't include our field trip fees in that, so that's a choice that a parent gets to make. So, we have staff that goes on field trips and we have staff that stays back, so we have to make sure we can cover that. Um, but we have, um, I think we have four, four, four field trips this year planned. And we also view the, going to the beach as a weekly field trip, so.
Right, right. Um, what was my other thing? Uh, just to comment on the lifeguard thing. So, my daughter's a lifeguard and I totally agree with that. But then again, it's kind like, sounds very similar to what we're talking about. It, what I'm hearing both back and forth, and I totally agree with Counselor Carter and what Counselor Norris had said. Um, because I, in my very short time here, I have seen like, I know when we're talking about economic development and there was a request and increase in pay for an employee. And so, I appreciate hearing that we're doing a survey. I, my hopes, I was hoping that would be done earlier. I just wanted, my question that is when we're doing the survey in reference to pay and salary or hourly, um, however it's gonna go, are we reflecting off of other towns or as Counselor Norris had said, in our region? Or how is that, what, you know, because I go back and forth on surveys, you know, surveys are surveys. But so, how, is that, how are we reflecting our pay according to what other towns are doing or according to a region? Or how is, or according to our budget or how are we doing the survey?
So, having a consultant help us with this has been really great.
And it's very difficult to do it without someone who's guiding you and knows the business. It started by our appraisals of the job descriptions to see how the different categories get hit by each particular position, not the person, the position. And, um, once we put that all together, then, um, and this took a few months to go through. The contractor then took the information and he has a huge, huge database. He's got several of them. He uses ERI, which is a hu- a really big one. Um, he knows to obviously drill down to the regions to see where those market rates are. And then when he gave it back to us, then we do another review of it, um, look to see where people are ending up in bands. So, there's like maybe three positions in the same band. And there might be two positions in one, no positions in one band and maybe twenty in another one. So, it's been really interesting and I think he's been really good at doing this. But, um, yeah, they do, they do regional searches, just, um, what you can do. And he's better at it because, or more able to get down to the information because he's got such a huge, um, database and resources. Because this is all that he does.
And Mayor Idrick, are we finding that, uh, the Groton municipality is, as far as pay, is running lower than our region? Or are we fitting in the median or what are we finding just presently?
You know, again, that's hard to do because I'd like looking at CCM because you can run, um, different reports on their information. We, I'm not sure if it's a good place to go for information just because of the differences in the job descriptions. For instance, in some of the cities or towns where, correct me if I'm wrong, there's more personnel in the parks and rec because of the number of people, correct?
In some areas, yes.
In some areas. So, you'd have to take a look at everybody's, um, job description and look to see how many people are in the department, how many people they serve and all of that. And, um, that's what we're trying to get the help from, from this, um, company to help us do that. Because it's very tedious, it's really time-consuming and wish, wish I had the time. That's one of my favorite things is compensation, but it just doesn't happen.
Right, so, so, I mean, so I appreciate all the work that's being put into it. So, but, but the general question is, are, are we as a municipality falling short of what other municipalities are paying, uh, our employees? Have we looked at that? And I just wanna know, I mean, it's like, it's like rating the schools. Schools are rated according to something, so as far as Groton municipality, how are we rated as far as our, paying our employees? And, you know, I, and so there's, there was a, um, I wanna say, I agree as far as like, you know, the mayor getting an increase, but also the increase, you know. I mean, your job is a huge job, Mary's job is a huge job, so, um, where's all play? But, I mean, so now I'm looking under the big umbrella. It sounds like we cut down into, well, what do they actually do, what do they actually do? I would think that was already taken care of to me when people come into play into a job. But, so Groton municipality, so I'll just generalize this question. Where do we sit in ranking as far as paying our employees? Because it sounds like to me that we possibly may lose people because we're not paying them according to what other municipalities are paying.
I'm just not, I, I guess having the
Go ahead and then I will.
Oh, I was just gonna say, having that municipality informations is important, but I'm not sure. I'm not sure how critical it is because do you think that, because someone works in one municipality, they're more apt to go to another municipality?
Uh, uh, well, I look at, so I, and I've been in the military as a nurse, been on bus driver. So, I look at, you know, you look at cost of living, you look at what's being paid. If I have the experience, I have the education, I certainly wanna be matched, for sure. But that, in my short time here, I've seen quite a few good discussions about people being paid. And I would think when you enter a job that like, okay, you have especially union, that you have, okay, this is what you're being paid because this is parents you have and this is education you have and then duh, 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 you go up, you know? And it doesn't seem to be, since I've been here, I may have read it wrong, but it seems like it's kind of choppy.
It is choppy.
Yeah.
We do not have a good structure and that's what
That's what I'm saying. Is that we don't have a good structure in it. So, when somebody does come in saying, oh, I'm coming in at fifty thousand, I know by in five years I'm gonna be here. You know what I mean? And that, that's where you keep your people because they know and then they're making their decision. They can decide to come out, they can decide to stay, they can plan ahead. And that's where I'm finding that, I don't, I don't, I'm not hearing that.
Do not have that here.
Right, so, I mean, as far as municipality, yeah, I think it's important to compare to municipalities. But, I mean, you know, we had a, a rural area that, you know, a bus driver, nurse, whatever is making whatever. You know, of course, I'm gonna look at the cost of living, but that's what drives people. You know, I'm gonna live out here because it's cheaper, we're gonna get paid here, you know? So, yeah, I think it's important to look at. Go ahead, I'm done.
Well, I didn't wanna interrupt.
A second.
No, I'll speak if you.
Well, if we're going second time, she's already spoken once, everybody's spoken once. Deputy Mayor Depot.
So, I, we talked about this previously, so I just wanna say a couple of things. One of which is, um, for salaries, I have always, and I, I mentioned this, I think, even when I first got on the council, I think it's odd to increase salaries not based on a performance review, which is what municipalities usually do. Because we have union contracts, so everyone gets raises based on union contracts, not based on merit or performance. And, um, so, I feel like if we are going to develop some sort of, for the non-union employees, um, that are not contract, some sort of performance review type of thing. So, I know that we ha- we have had issues where people's salary have been drastically lower than any standard that we could find, which to me is a whole different category. At the same time, those people's supervisors have said that they're doing such a good job. So, that to me is, was why that issue was so important. Because the disparity was so large and the person was performing above expectations. The other thing is, I have an issue in general. Um, it's been mentioned a couple of times to potentially increase a number in the budget. And I am hopeful that if a council is going to increase the budget somewhere, that they are going to offer a place in the budget where they think it should be decreased. Because just offer, making increases in the budget is going to increase our overall budget, possibly increase the mill rate and affect the taxpayers. So, I'm not necessarily in favor of making just increases. I think if we have a good idea, could be a good idea to increase a cer- certain part of the budget that we recommend. I personally, if I was gonna do that, would say I think we should take money from here and put it to here. Because otherwise, we're asking the staff to change their budget with the same amount of money. And I don't know that that's fair or, um, we're kinda adding work to, to them. So, yeah, I think that's all I have to say on the salary thing. I have a question about a different line of the budget.
What?
Okay, um, going back to your budget, Mary.
Okay.
I think that I ask this question every year because it's one of the items that is kind of hard to predict. But can you explain what is in contractual services? Because I think this is an area where you have money set aside that you don't necessarily always use every year. Because it looks like, for example, your twenty-two budget was seventy-six thousand, two hundred and fifteen. Your twenty-three budget was eighty-one thousand, three twenty-five, and now we're increasing it to eighty-nine thousand. But those last two years, um, did, you didn't reach the, the budget amount. So, can you just go over what is in that line item?
Sure, so contractual services under, um, under the leadership part of it is all the cell phones, the office phones, the copiers and the safety incentive program that we, uh, run through for the city, uh, the employees. Under the summer recreation part, it's all the contractual services for drug testing, background checks, physicals and training and bus trip, field trip, transportation.
So, the fact that you haven't been able to hire lifeguards is probably impacting that number too because you don't have to do.
So, the next one would be, but beach operations is the same thing, yes.
Oh, okay.
So, beach operations, there's been a, we haven't hired, um, ten lifeguards. We haven't, and then, and also on the playground, we haven't used as much bus transportation because we have, as Christine pointed out, we have cut down some of our field trips.
Okay.
And then we also have in contractual services, all our program stuff. Golf lessons, uh, basketball program, soccer program, babysitting courses, professional services outside of, um, like if I hire a, a yoga instructor, um, concerts in the park, the audio for concerts in the park, our karate program and our winter and summer cabarets, all come out of contractual services. We also budget in there for new programs and other entertainment and any, uh, if we potentially have to rent any equipment to do a program. So, that's where our programming budget comes out of.
Okay.
So, if we don't offer any new programs, then we may, I mean, right now, we have in here for our new programs thirty, twenty-three hundred dollars. And then, no, sorry, thirty-six hundred dollars and then other entertainment, uh, twenty-three hundred dollars. I can, uh, I did watch your meeting last week and when Counselor Norris talked about potentially things at Thames Park in the future, that's where we have some money earmarked for new events or programs. If we don't do anything, then that money doesn't get used.
So, your budget last year was eighty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-five, but you only spent sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight. Can you tell me what you have planned to spend eighty-nine thousand?
Concert series starts in June. What, what, so?
But we had the concert series last year too, though.
Sure, but it starts June sixteen, so we'll have three concerts before this budget year is over. The hiring process is all taking place right now, so all the drug testing, background checks, all that stuff will take place in the next, hopefully, month and a half? Oh, and I don't have this over here, sorry.
Um, so all the hiring processes are right now. So, our budget is somewhat.
So, is that not included in your estimated year end?
Oh, wait, okay, fair, bear with me because I have a lot of paper in front of me. Which one? Which page? Just give me a page number.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-six. Eighty-nine.
It's the one with the numbers, just kidding.
Not eighty-seven, there we go.
Sorry.
So, it's budgeted eighty-one thousand dollars, right?
Yep, so your estimate year end is sixty-seven, eight ninety-eight?
Correct.
So, are you saying that your costs for drug testing, three concerts in the park are not in that number yet?
Oh, they are, sorry, I'm look, I, I'm sorry, I apologize. They are.
Okay.
And then that's just based on past history of not getting the number of guards and or, um, guards and staff at the beach. Some of, some of our staff is hired after the fiscal year starts, so it hits the next budget.
So, we're budgeting, we're increasing the budget for contractual services?
So, we can do new programs.
On the
Yep.
Hope, okay.
So, we can add, we added a soccer program this year that wasn't budgeted last, the last two years. We've done a, it's three thousand dollars a session. And we've had four sessions since we now have a new elementary school. So, we've added, um, we've added some dollars so we can continue to do that after-school program for the kids. Again, that's where all our program monies come out of. We don't have, you know, we, we would always like to add, I know that's one of the goals, is always to add some new programs. Some contractual services is where some of the new programs come out of.
Okay.
But we're not gonna add, we're, we're, we're not adding any, we've already done our new programs. Soccer's all done, it ended in March.
So, I can, I think that makes me more confused. So, because, so you, you've already added new programs, but you're expecting to spend twenty-one thousand dollars more this coming year? Because that's the difference between the eighty-nine thousand that's in the budget, proposed for contractual services versus what you are predicting to spend this year, which is sixty-seven, eight ninety-eight. So, there's twenty-one thousand.
And this estimate is given based on when I present my budget to Ron and, and the mayor, which was probably two and a half months ago. I did make an adjustment our second meeting, but it amazed, it made, it's not current. That's not a current estimate based on, it's current based on when I presented my last budget to the, to, to the mayor and, um, and to Ron. Because I have a, I think this is the last one I did when you guys. Excuse me?
No, I was telling Counselor Carter he doesn't have the floor.
So, estimates change a little bit from when we present until
Right.
So.
So, do you think this is sixty-seven, eight nine eight is?
Probably will go up.
Probably not, okay.
No, it's probably not accurate, it's probably low.
Okay.
Sorry. Because we do a year-to-date based on, and, and then I do, uh, yeah. Some fees went up before I, after I presented my budget too for, uh, contra- uh, um, drug testing and, um, P- not P-Quan anymore, but Yale New Haven, physicals and all that stuff. So, we got that after the fact. So, that could change a little bit. So that could change a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Sheffield?
Linda, could you come up for a quick second? She said, "No, not me."
Little quick ones.
Quick question for you, Linda, regarding, um, you said, uh, you utilize CCM as far as, uh, guidance for, uh,
For the positions here on the city side.
How often do we, do you, you know, use CCM? That's something I haven't heard in a while, so-
Oh, really?
No, I-
That's, um, that's interesting. There's about ten or fifteen of us, directors of HR, that have gotten together and we meet, um, which has been really, really great. I've done that in other jobs, and it's really helpful. None of us can seem to get a handle on salaries.
Okay.
And, um, I look at it probably, I don't know, probably three, four times a year. More so when someone's news coming in, or if we've reevaluated a job description or something, then we'll look at it again to see where we sit in that, and you know, you had asked before, where do we sit? It depends on the position. Some positions we are right on, some are, we're low, and, um, there's some where they're, they are higher than we are.
Now, we, do we use CCM as, as sort of a recruiting tool in a lot of ways, as far as getting talent to, you know, attract talent to come here to work for the city?
So it would be as far as, oh, you, you're talking about job postings on CCM?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, we've used, we've used it for job postings.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we're able to, um, use that as far as, like I said, with salary and so forth, how we can, you know?
We, we want to make sure we're not too much off the mark. And we often will bring back people, we will bring in new people, based on what the person leaving has made.
Okay.
We often do that, which is the problem with not having, um, a comp structure, where you've got the min, medium, max, so you can kind of flow, and we will have it, before, before I go, we will have it. Absolutely.
All right, thank you. That, I think that's all for, as far as for you. My next question is going to be to Ron, um, regarding if we were to, um, adjust a salary higher, uh, for a city employee. Is our budget currently, are we at a, um, profit, so to speak, uh, to where we could afford raising someone's pay? Without having to raise the mill rate? Are we in that position as far as our overall city budget? Are we in the black, basically, as I would say, not in the-
The way that the budget's prepared right now, it's a flat mill rate. If you increase any expenditure, the offset will be taxes, that would need to increase if there's no decrease.
Okay. But it currently, um, we're, we're not in any deficit as far as in the red to where we would have to raise at this point, but if anything, increase that would be reflected in the mill rate is what you're saying?
Correct. If we don't, if we increase the expenditures and don't reduce anything, the offsetting revenue side would be the tax base, would be the bouncer.
Thank you.
Councilor Norris? You have the floor?
So, just need to ask you more on this salary thing. There's been two, possibly three hires in Southeastern Connecticut within the past year that are making upwards of a hundred and four thousand. That's where that number comes from. Two, I understand salary surveys are extremely difficult to process, and especially with CCM, really depends on how often that they are doing their salary surveys. So that's where that comes up. I appreciate Deputy Mayor suggesting that the council wants to add or make adjustments to a budget, that, um, we can find places to make that adjustment, so the whole overall budget does not change, and I can gladly do that. But I would also venture to say that may not be the job of council, versus giving the mayor directive to find that, uh, figure, but I am more than happy to find those monies. A little bang here against the deputy director and the rest of the city. There just seems to be quite a number of mistakes and deficiencies within the budget this year, even going back to last week, where I guess there was a charge made in the flying department that doesn't show up in the budget. So I think it would be really nice if we could tighten up that a little bit. Mary Hill, your, uh, director here, talked about trips for summer camp. The professional parts of recreation is about exposure, and then younger, make your camp trip setup. Have you created or have you noticed a situation of the haves and have-nots? When it comes to going on trips, and do you currently provide scholarships with family that wish to attend the trips and cannot afford?
So, are you asking, have we taken a survey to see how many kids attend our trips that are involved with our playground program?
No, what I'm asking is, have you come across families that would like to attend trips and cannot afford it?
Uh, we have, but we do offer scholarships through the Groton Human Services Department. They do fill out paperwork, and then they can, uh, share with, the, human services will share with them what they can afford to, to pay.
Is that specific to trips or camps?
For, both, both, to, to playground and to trips.
Okay. One, I would strongly urge you then to, um, I don't know, step up. Marketing on, or providing information to families to do that. And the other thing I, I would wonder is, sometimes people that can't afford these kind of amended programs are the ones that are just above qualifying for scholarships and help. And I wonder how much would it cost to add to the budget, or phase in the budget to add trips as part of the summer camp experience?
I will share with you, Councilor Norris, that we were just, um, at an event at Branford Manor this past Wednesday, the twelfth, they had a community event, of which we had a table with our playground program advertisement, and we also had the information to share with families in regards to how they can obtain a scholarship. We went through all the giveaways that we did, we had our giant connect forest to bring kids over to the program, um, over to the table. Haven't had an opportunity to talk to my playground director to see what the influx of traffic was at our table, but we were at that, we were invited, and we did attend that event this past Wednesday.
Thank you. But I, I don't know those are the folks that I'm talking about. So, a, a single family with one child making thirty-seven thousand and less, less can qualify, but what about the single family that's making forty thousand and doesn't qualify? Is there anything we can do for that family? So that's why I'm suggesting, how much does it cost to provide trips? And if that can be added into the budget?
We could look into that, to see what it, I mean, I could get an idea how many kids don't go on our trips, uh, because of the financial burden. I don't have that information, information.
Maybe you can figure that out.
Yep.
Of, um, the past, like a five-year forecast, the past four years and this coming up. The, the other thing I have to ask is, where would I find your maintenance and repair for the rest of the house?
In the budget I haven't presented to you yet.
But the revenue goes into Recreation Division?
Yes. Beach main- beach maintenance for the houses in the maintenance budget, but we put the revenue into, into the, um, the recreation side of the budget. But it all kind of washes out at the end.
Okay. The last thing I have is, I, I do remember a couple of months back, that we approved beach parking?
Yes.
And you would mention that there would be, is it one day a week, or one day a month, or would this be for veterans? If you remember that?
So, so we, um, last year, we tried to, so, uh, there's been multiple talks over the years about a military discount. So last year, we did a Military Appreciation Day, uh, the last Monday of each month. This year, the be, uh, the, when the rules and regulations and the user fees were re, uh, brought to, before the mayor and council, there's a five-dollar discount, military discount for anybody, uh, to off their beach pass. So if you, so it-
So, my question really not to that is, in your projected revenue, or your revenue from the beach for the fiscal year twenty-four, how much are you projecting a substantial decrease? Because I'm, I'm just guessing, in the growing area, including the city, there are a lot of veterans. And how much is that five dollars going to impact the revenue for the beach?
I'm not sure if I know that answer right now. I do know that our fees in general went up, um, overall across the board. We have some fees that, you know, a non-resident, non-senior, used to be a seventy-dollar fee, and now it's a hundred. Um, so even on a military, if they get a military discount, it's going to be ninety-five. So there is a, a, quite a, a jump in some of the other areas. It'd be a, an area I could bring back to the council at the end of the season to see where, where we are in regards to beach passes, and how it reflected with the five-dollar military discount. It's only on the beach passes, it's not on the gate receipts, so the gate would still see the same.
Okay, got it. Thank you very much.
Councilor Norris, in addition to that, the five dollars, there may be a loss, but there may be an increase in ticket sales due to the five dollars being off that people didn't go last year, that they're now enticed to, to buy a ticket because it's, or, not ticket, but a beach pass because it's five dollars less.
Thank you.
Hey, any, Deputy Mayor Depot?
One last thing, it's not a question, it's just a request. Can you, um, provide the council with a ten-year history of the salary of the Parks and Rec Director?
Yes, we will.
That way we know.
Understand.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this account? Councilor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, uh, just listen to, and I think it's just a comment. Um, what I'm hearing is, it's always being deferred back to taxes and keeping the mill rate, totally agree. But also too, we're asking a lot of questions and asking for the directors to, uh, look at surveys, come up with this, can we answer that? And I'm, I'm not saying, some may be easy and some may not, but then, I'm thinking to myself, as a constituent of the Groton City, and many people, not everybody's going to use Parks and Rec, but a lot of people are going to use Washington Park for the free concerts and so forth and so on. So I'm not saying to increase the taxes, that, that's what we're here for, the budget, but it's kind of sound like, well, we don't want to do this and this and this, because it'll increase the tax rate. But then again, if we want things in the city, I mean, you know, sometimes that needs to happen. You know, because there have been costs, I see since I've been living in the city, you know, costs in just even my electric bill, sewer, so forth and so on, all that is added up, but the mill rate stays the same. You know, I appreciate that, but then again, on the other side is, you know, what block are we actually standing on here? You know, who, we, we want to, I think especially for Parks and Rec, I, this is my heart, is seeing our next generation being fed. And, and that's worth our monies, for sure.
Any other comments on this account? Okay, Mary, move on to, uh, maintenance, please?
So our maintenance, um, sorry, I have to refocus, though. So our maintenance in, um, uh, line item under Parks and Grounds, there's an increase there. That is due to park improvements. We have, um, park improvement, it covers any of our park, all of our parks, uh, in regards to major, some bigger, like, I'll use Washington Park as one of the examples, it's for, you know, to get sod and or stone dust or clay for the fields. We have the work, uh, the Sub Memorial in this, um, in this, uh, to do any improvement down there. We have irrigation on two, on one, uh, at the Sub Memorial on one field, and on, on one field. So, um, this is the area, tree maintenance, lawn care, things that, um, have had to make expenses this past year that, um, we, um, needed to, um, to, uh, catch up to, in regards to some of the fees that they've given us. I mean, you know, clay, we just got clay for one of the fields, and it was twenty-nine hundred dollars. And, you know, we got five fields, and one truckload, sometimes, when we did field three, it took almost the whole truckload. So we just want to cut, we want to make sure we have the means to keep our fields, we've just done a lot of work on them, and we'd like to keep them look, moving forward, so we don't get into the part where we're really doing a rehab on them, because we, we've neglected to do the work. I have a, an increase in the beach maintenance budget, and the majority of this is actually, um, the overtime for my parks guys. We used to, so we go in three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, at five o'clock in the morning to sand, to, to groom the sand, to get the seaweed off, and we also empty the garbage, run, do the bathrooms, and we used to have a, we used to hire or try to hire a beach maintenance kid to come in and help us with that, but we haven't been able to do that the last two years. So the full-time staff goes in there and does all that Monday through, Monday through Friday in the mornings, and then there, there are Saturdays and Sundays. So I did not, um, budget accordingly for that last year, so I just want to make that adjustment with them. And, and, and then the, um, under general support, uh, that line items up, uh, I get, that's where our vehicle operations and supplies come in, so we have purchased a few pieces of new equipment. We want to make sure we have maintenance plans on those, so that we keep them for a long time. We have, um, case in point, the tractor that we use down on the, that's attached to our sand groomer, was a, that machine was eighteen years old when I got here seventeen years, years ago. But because of the maintenance and the, how we work, and we only use it, granted, we only use it eighty days of the year, because it's down at the beach, and it's, you know, but it's maintained us being able to keep our Kubota in good shape and not having to put it down into the sand. And the other large inju- uh, jump in this is my, uh, my reserve funds and equipment, um, and there's a twenty-one thousand dollar increase in there. For capital this year, I'm looking to do some tree maintenance. We've had some, our tree growth in Washington Park is very large, and they're very old trees, they're very top-heavy, um, there's widows, there's broken off, and there's things that need to be looked at. So we want, we would like to, you know, get, be able to hire somebody to get in there, take care of our trees. And also the sidewalk that leads from the lower parking lot by Pavilion Five up to the tennis courts is in dire need of some repair or replacement. So we're looking at either an asphalt sidewalk or, and/or a sidewalk. So those are the two capital programs that we have in that budget.
Any questions on this account, Councilor Sheffield?
Uh, so Mary, so this, uh, sidewalk, uh, to the tennis court, will that, hopefully, I guess coincide with whatever maintenance you have to the actual tennis courts, if those get repaired, um, I guess through, um, whatever the ARPA funds, if that gets approved, or, you know?
Correct. So it's, well, it's the access to them, so, yes, it will, and it will enhance the, um, the access to that, to those tennis, to the existing tennis courts, and then if we have, if, if, and, if we are able to replace them to the, the new courts.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilor Carter?
In regards to, uh, parks, so I know we have, we have, uh, Grosso Tech that, that uses the, um, the tennis courts. And we have Grosso Tech that also, uh, uses Washington Park for home games, right?
Correct.
We have, um, Avery Point that uses the park for home games, correct?
Correct.
Do we receive any incentive from them, as far as the maintenance or any, any of that?
We do not. I mean, Fitch, Fitch Girl Softball also uses the softball field, but, um, historically, we haven't charged for groups that are, are youth-related, and/or our local high schools. Just due to the nature of the, the park, was developed way back when under the Department of Interior monies. So it's been always designed that it's, it's more of a community park than a city or Groton Park, so we do not, um, charge our high schools. And we have an agreement with Avery Point, um, for field space, and then we get pool space. Pool time, and we have a, a written agreement with them and how that's all broken down.
I, I, I understand, I understand the Fitch High School thing, that's, that's a given, right? It's our own, I mean, it's literally come out of our own, right? And I, uh, that's good, that's a good trade-off with, uh, Avery Point, right? With the Grosso Tech thing, this is something I actually found out this year, right? And, um, and I, not saying this is a bad thing, I mean, I'm a state employee and whatnot, right? But I, I think, is there a possibility that we can look at, as far as the state giving us some type of incentive or something, as far as allowing them to, to, to utilize our fields? Like, I get the whole community thing, but it's another government, and we're actually having to come up- Like, I get the whole community thing, but it's another government and we're actually having to come up with the, you know, um-
Sure.
It, I mean, it's the state, you know?
We can look into that, yeah.
Just to look into it, I mean, anything would count, you know what I mean? Especially when we're, we're talking, you know, uh, y- y- you never know, you know?
Sure.
It comes from different areas.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Any other questions or comments on this budget?
Your Honor?
Councilor Norris, you have the floor.
Uh, Mary, to the director, do you have any type of plan for the Zaburski House in terms of, yeah, any CIP of, uh, painting, interior, exterior, roofing, sidewalks, that kind of stuff?
So currently, we have the Zaburski Hou- um, uh, painting and, um, railing repair as one of the options or one of the items in the ARPA funding, um, process. We have done, we did, the Zaburski House was closed down, uh, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, I believe, for repair work. Uh, so we had had it in our CIP, uh, the nature of where it's located, obviously, the wood's already rotting and the paint's already chunks of, are coming off the side of the building. So I, I guess, my answer to that would be if, moving forward, if ARPA funds aren't used, then we would have to look at putting it in the CIP for future years. Um, I am trying to work with our on-call architects and/or engineer, I'm not quite what direction I need to go in regards to looking at the interior of the buildings to see what, um, what we can do to modify. I mean, has it dropped ceiling, it's, it's got, you know, it needs new carpet, it's, is it usable, is it being used in a nature, uh, manner that it could be improved? It is, it is by fire code, limited to fifty people or less, based on the, the fire code in the, in the zone that it's in. So we have those parameters to work into, but it is something that, uh, I was gonna put it in initially into my CIP, but then we looked at maybe, uh, using ARPA funds for that.
Andrew, if it would be possible, I'd have to check with the mayor on this one. If working with Public Works, then the building officials can come up with some type of asset management plan of that building and, uh, possibly present that in mid-February sometime, I would agree.
Mid what, February? Did you just say mid-February?
Yes.
Okay, like, next year.
Give me some time.
Basically, we should have a five-year, so one of the things you and I have been talking about is a long-range plan, a five-year plan of all the assets that fall under your purview, on how we're going to manage them, repair them, maintain them. And that's something that we had talked about.
Mm-huh.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, Mary, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Hey, Walter, could you come up? So the next one is building and zoning on page thirty-four.
It's Walter's first time, huh? We gotta take it easy on Walter.
So Walter is in the position, but this is not, he did not prepare this budget, so between, he will be executing the budget, which is why I want him here, but Ron and I, I am, Ron and I will go through this with you. So it starts on page thirty-six, but if you go to page thirty-seven, this is where the actual numbers are. So if you look at the general support, you'll see that for twenty-three, we had six-hundred-eighty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-five. We've dropped that to two-oh-three, two-twenty-five. And the reason being is, building six-hundred, we had increased services for building six-hundred, and now... Is that not true? That is true. Well, we dropped it from six-eighty-seven to two-oh-three. On page thirty-seven, or which page do you wanna go to?
I was on page thirty-eight.
All right, then fine, go to thirty-eight.
Which is just a detail.
Okay, so we can go to the detail, so we can go to contractual services at the bottom, which was five-hundred-and-fifteen thousand. Now we have twenty-five thousand, and that's because we had contractual services there for third-party reviews and things like that if we needed it. Now the building six-hundred has received the CO, building six-oh-four has received the CO, building six-oh-five will, will see, will receive a CO in theory in July of this year. So we won't need those, uh, extra contractual services.
Co- correct, well, with that, when the budget was built five years ago, when that first came into play, we, we always kept a piece there in case we needed to contract that out. We did hire an individual to come on staff, who was still here, and if he decided to leave, we would have needed the outside contractual services. That's, every year, you'd see that number drop, and then this year, it's finally completely gone, and which is similar to what you saw in the fire budget with the hundred thousand that came out of their contractual, that was decreased. So it's the same.
So when you look at the full-time employees, that's for the three percent raises. The benefits are, uh, estimated at five percent increase, but overall, this budget went down forty-two point two-seven percent. Any questions on this budget? Okay, let me take you to, real quick, you had a question? I didn't see your hand.
I know.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor Depot?
Um, I, just a quick question. On page thirty-nine, where it talks about the employee, um, can you remind me why we had two building officials, one building inspector, and then it flip-flopped? Cause for, for twenty-two, for fiscal year ending June twenty-two, there's two full-time equivalents for building official and one for building inspector, and then the next budget year, it flip-flopped.
Yeah, they should both be just building inspectors. For some reason, it just, when it carried over in the, um, in the budget book, it carried it up into the building official line to salary for that other building inspector. It's one building official, two inspectors, which is the one, the contractual position and the assistant.
So it was corrected in twenty-three? So it should be one building official and two building inspectors, like it is now?
Correct. Correct.
Got it.
Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, uh, uh, Councilor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. So on the building official, you said one, building inspector, two. So on their salary, the building inspector, that is split in two, or is that per building inspector?
It just got lumped, the building inspector got lumped up with the official, so it should really be, the two, needs to be split back out, one of those put down into that building inspector for the twenty-two year, it was corrected in the twenty-three.
Okay, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm understanding, um-
Okay, we have, we should have one building official.
Yeah.
That's the department head.
Yeah.
We have two inspectors.
Right.
And then the secretary.
Right, no, I have that, I'm just asking about the pay. Is the pay here for both, for the building inspector, that split in half? So, so that's for two people?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I'm asking, all right. And I do have one more question.
Okay, Councilor Piazza?
Thank you. Um, so official and inspector, what's, uh, typically the difference, is education, licensing? What is it specifically?
The building officials, the department head, that's, that's, um, appointed, and then the inspector would be?
So the official has more experience, more education, or both than the inspector, or is it just?
We're all building officials downstairs.
Okay.
You can only have one building official for this municipality.
So it's basically, I'm gonna look at this as like, uh, a nurse. So we're all nurses, but then I'm the director of nursing. Okay, gotcha.
Did I see your hand? Okay, anything else on this? Okay, just real quick, uh, go to page forty-one, I wanna take you to the boards and commissions, cause this typically falls under this position as the liaison. So, uh, so if you look at the, uh, office supplies and advertising, we have postings that are there, the, let's see, where were we? If you go back, so if you go back over here to the cost center, zoning board, well, forty-two eighty, where's, where are we here? All right, let me, you know, I do wanna do this. So zoning board of appeals went from twenty-six to twenty-eight, and that's because, uh, of the attorney fees, because we actually have something that's in litigation. And then, the conservation commission is based on estimates of what we're, of the work that we have coming up, so that was reduced. So that's that on the boards and commissions. So any other, any question, other questions on this account? Okay, thank you, Walter, thank you. Okay, now we'll go to sanitation and building maintenance, page seventy-three.
Okay, good evening all. Good evening, so I have two budgets, the first one's sanitation and the second one would be for facilities, okay? Um, regarding the sanitation budget, um, this sanitation division supports collection, transportation, disposal of the city's municipal solid waste, five days a week, recycling, four days a week, and bulky waste as requested and scheduled. Includes fleet maintenance and fleet vehicles, okay? Um, a couple of quick things, um, increases are for labor and benefits and for fifty thousand dollars for the vehicle replacement fund. We have one new employee, Kelly Gillis, she started in December, she's been a wonderful ad, and she replaced a person that retired, Charles Koch. And I'll switch over to the budget piece. And if you wish to follow me along, if you go to page seventy-six, and I'll work down the list from there, okay? Uh, so full-time employees, um, is going from three-ninety-two, five-fifty-four, up to three-ninety-three, five-twenty. Overtime will stay the same at two-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty. Part-time employees, uh, stay the same, again, that's thirty-eight thousand, four-hundred. That includes two seasonal employees for solid waste and two for recycling. Uh, longevity, um, went, it stayed the same at twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, medical insurance, uh, two-oh-five, five-fifty-nine, to two-hundred-and-fifteen, eight-thirty-six. Life insurance, uh, five percent increase, thirty-seven, thirty-nine-seventy-five to forty-one-seventy-four. Pensions, uh, thirty-four, oh-twenty, up to thirty-five, seven-twenty-one, that's also five percent. Uh, FICA tax is thirty-three, four-eighty-six, up to thirty-five, one-sixty-two, also five percent. Uh, other post-employment benefits, uh, is thirteen, five-fifty, and that stayed the same, that was zero percent. Workers' compensation, uh, five percent increase, that went from seventy thousand up to the seventy-three, five hundred. And down to operating expenses, office supplies, materials, stayed the same, a hundred dollars. Contractual services went, uh, stayed the same, nine thousand to nine thousand, that's any contracted repairs that we use. Tipping fees, uh, which includes bulky waste, and that stayed the same at two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. That includes taking materials to Crandall and also up to Lisbon, so recyclables to Crandall and solid waste up to Lisbon, okay? General materials and supplies stayed the same, that's twelve thousand dollars, and that actually pays for the, um, that funds the, the bins, the containers, the toders, et cetera, which we sell, okay? Vehicle operation supplies stayed the same at thirty thousand dollars, that's parts, materials, tires, et cetera, for the vehicles. Just the vehicles for sanitation and recycling. Uh, diesel fuel stayed the same, that's twen- uh, thirty thousand across. That's typically about twenty thousand dollars for the solid waste trucks and about ten thousand dollars for the recycling. And the last line item is vehicles, and that is our reserve fund. Last year, we put in a hundred thousand dollars, this year, we dropped that to fifty thousand dollars. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have for that budget.
Questions from the council regarding sanitation? Okay, move on to, uh, building maintenance, that's on page seventy-eight.
Okay. Coming up. Okay, and if you wish to follow along, again, if you go to page eighty-one and follow me right down, and I'll go through everything quickly. Uh, full-time employees, that's twenty percent of my salary, and that also includes, uh, half of a labor, uh, full-time employee, that's, and that person is, uh, plowing the, you know, the, the, uh, the entrance, we do some sidewalk repair, et cetera, et cetera. That went from, uh, fifty-two, four-ninety, not, forty-fourty-nine, to fifty-four, two-ninety-one. Uh, medical insurance, um, again, eighteen, two-twenty-eight, to nineteen, one-forty. Uh, pensions, um, that stayed the same, fifty-two, fifty. Uh, FICA tax, thirty-nine hundred, up to four thousand, oh-ninety-five. Other post-employment benefits, eighteen-thirty, stayed the same, no change. Workers' comp, um, went from twelve thousand, oh-seventy-five, to twelve, six-eighty. Next is operating expenses. Office materials and advertising was zero, utilities and fuel, um, that went from one thousand to three thousand. Contracted services stayed the same, sixty-five thousand dollars across the board. Um, and that's typically, you'll find fire alarms, sprinkler service, uh, backflow preventers, asbestos, pest control, HVAC PMs, boiler inspections, that's the, that's the bulk of it really, right there for the facility. General materials and supplies, those are consumables, asphalt, concrete, cleaning products, store hardware, copy paper, belts and filters for HVAC equipment. And then we get down to, and that actually totals up to the grand total, two-oh-five, five-fifty-six, and that's it. Okay, and if you have any questions on that?
Questions or comments on the building maintenance budget? Okay, that's it, thank you, Bill.
Thank you all, good evening.
Stay where you are, cause I'm gonna do public works contract for cracked ceiling and roads next, since you're here.
Okay, all right, so this here is a request for you for approval, um, to authorize and approve the contract with Connecticut Seal Coating, um, from Bethlehem, Connecticut, for cracked ceiling, uh, which are for the roads identified by our team, so we do a survey every year, um, and, uh, we get on top of that, and what we do is we seal the roads in an effort, it's a preventative maintenance thing, so we, we stay on top of that, and really, that adds, the great value there is that you stay on top of that, you do that work, it eliminates the, the, uh, the need later on, should you not do that, uh, for full-depth reclamation, and, and sometimes those costs will go up five to seven times as much. This request is for you to approve, not to exceed twenty thousand dollars, and be paid from approved fiscal year ending twenty-three, um, highway operating funds. The roads that I'm looking at are Meridian Street, um, so the ex, from, uh, the park over to the light, and then across to the extension, Monument Street, up on the monument, Baker Avenue, Eastern Point Road from Aquatic Road down at the Four Corners, up to where it takes over to state, which is Route three-forty-nine, Forest Avenue and West Elderkin Avenue. And, uh, the estimate that I have for that is nineteen thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and ninety-two cents. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have for that.
Questions, Councilor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. So my only question is, the streets that are picked here, is this like a continuance?
that we revisit every year.
Okay. So are, there are other roads that may need it later in the year, or these are?
This will put us in a really good spot. And the twenty thousand dollars works out to be pretty decent, so it's working really well.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Councilor Carter?
Is the, um, the crew that came out a couple of years ago?
Yeah.
With the little, filled in the cracks and lines and all that stuff?
Absolutely.
So if I, if I recall, did they do that throughout the city? Or was, or are you saying that there was a specific, or, 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 sorry?
Yeah.
Did they do that throughout the city, throughout the city, and coated or sealed the cracks that were, that were, um, that were present then? But you're saying, since within that time, there may be other cracks that, that need to be resealed?
Addressed? Yeah, so, good question. So, again, we look at it every year, and the conditions change sometimes, so, and we do, we have a, like a master list, what we want to look at, and we keep a track of everything that was milled and paved, so we know those roads are really rated, and we have what's called a pavement condition index rating, so all of the streets were hit.
Yeah, that's what, that's what, because I saw them everywhere. So that's what I was asking, i- is it, is it, it doesn't matter.
No, no, that's a good question.
They're good to go.
No, it's a good question. So these roads typically, you'll find them in, in that range from zero to a hundred.
Yeah.
These roads will fall in that category where you want to address, you know, preventative maintenance work.
Gotcha.
And if a score gets too low, then you get into the, like we just did, Aquatic.
Now, 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 is that yearly, or was that last, a couple of years ago, when they last came?
That, that report is, no, that report is, it's a living document, so we do refresh the numbers, but that report was done before I got here, and I think it's roughly four to five years old.
Really?
Yep. Yep. But again, it's living, and we change those numbers, right? Town uses the same document, okay?
Any other questions or comments on this? Councilor Sheffield?
How often do you think we'll need to, you know, keep filling the crack? How often do you normally have to, you know?
I would expect that we'll do this every year, the twenty thousand dollar piece, and it's really part of your preventative maintenance, so by doing that, you avoid your deeper costs, you know, and you don't do that, you know, and the cracks are there, the water gets down, it starts ruining, you know, the, the tubular concrete, everything, and then all of a sudden, you're down to, I've got to remove it all, plus I've got to get down there, hit the gravel, grade it, and the costs, again, go five to seven times as much. Preventative maintenance.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of four, seventeen, twenty-three?
So moved.
Session.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension motion carries. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you all for your bill.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, Groton Utilities, I'm gonna bring Ron up to update you about the sole source, update the Synagro McVac issue, and address that issue specifically, but also to talk about sole source. So with that, Director, good day.
As a result of one of the last meetings, I was made aware of two questions. The first question was what happens to the residuals when it's removed from the basement? So when they remove the residuals from the basin, they take it up to ECR and Danielson, and Danielson has a permit to actually blend it. The residuals that are coming out have actually no nutritional value in them whatsoever, so they actually mix it with high nutrient, you know, manure and other soils, so that they can go off and be used as fertilizer and fill that's actually beneficial to growing things and stuff like that. That's actually what it's used for. As it relate-
What do we used to do?
Up till this year, we have a drying area in the watershed, and every year, we suck it out or haul it out into a truck, bring it up onto the watershed, and we actually have a permit to let it lay on the land, and it actually dries on the land. Recently, and while Rick and Ray were here, we were looking at, how do we get that off our land, off the watershed? Because it's, it's an aluminum-based residual that precipitates out of the water, and it settles, and we bring it up there and it dries, so it's permitted for drying. So what do we do with it? So, we've been trying to look at hauling it off-site to some other use. There is a place in Connecticut that incinerates it, the MDC incinerates it, but they're full, they're not taking any more customers, so the only other option is to get it to ECR, where they do this, have this beneficial use permit. And that discussion kind of flows right into why it was sole sourced. It was sole sourced because-
Hold on a minute.
Yep.
So when we were, when we were trucking this onto our own property, who is primarily conducting that service?
Uh, McVac. McVac actually trucked it to our site.
All right. And then continue on with the evaluation, how we got to where we are now, and therefore the conflict.
Kelsey, who is actually late on a plane, she was gonna come explain this, she made the recommendation and did the research to figure out how to get this taken in one fell swoop off our site and not have it dry on our land.
Hold on a minute, take a step back. Who is Kelsey and what position is she in?
Oh, Kelsey-
And why do we have that?
Kelsey Odell is our environmental engineer. We've had an environmental engineer hired for the last couple of years, it's a fairly new position, because the utility hadn't had someone that focused on such endeavors. It's, you know, how do we do it right? How do we treat the environment right? She gets involved in somewhat EHNS kind of things as it relates to safety and doing things with a good independent view to help operations do their job better and do it all the way right. To get back to hauling it onto our own site, the effort was made to, how can we move it once and do it right? The only people that have a permit to go to ECR that can be used for a municipality such as us, a water company that we could use, was Synagro. So it ended up getting sole sourced to Synagro, because they currently hold a permit that allows us to leverage to bring our material to a beneficial use facility of ECR. We have applied for the same permit, so that we can actually have the DPH tell us that we can do that and allow us to bring it to ECR, because what happens is, you own these residuals, cradle to grave, it's like, similar to asbestos or PCBs, you have to have a permit process that tracks where it is, who takes it, and all that kind of stuff. When it goes to ECR and they're blending it for beneficial reuse, you really don't own it anymore, it's been blended and made into a carte blanche thing that can go anywhere and be used at multiple places, so the DPH permitting process to do that is quite intensive. And you need to follow the rules correctly. So that was why the action item originally said, you know, pending approval of the DEP to, you know, so we had to get their approval to actually do that, and that allowed us to bring it to Synagro, who we could leverage their permit to bring it to ECR. We have applied, or Kelsey is applying, for the same permit for ourselves, so that we can bid it and use our own permit and hopefully use one of three or four different trucking vendors to do that same service. So the intent is not to sole source this again. But it was a good way to get to a point where we're doing single stream to a beneficial reuse of something that you really don't want sitting on your watershed.
So Bill McEwen, McVac contacted several counselors, if not all. Actually, I think he sent an email to all of you, I'm not sure. And I asked Ron to get his team together and to talk to McEwen and have a discussion regarding this whole thing. What used to happen, what's happening, and those kind of things. Can you, can you discuss that meeting and the outcome of that meeting?
Yes, we, we had a pretty good meeting, and actually, it was really good. We got, got to introduce him to Joe Pratt, our new operation, water, wastewater operations manager. Joe Pratt, you may remember, used to be the chief, CPO of the wastewater plant. He spoke to council routinely. So we got to introduce Bill McEwen to Joe Pratt. Joe Pratt basically is the decision-maker with the guidance of Kelsey Odell to go down and figure out how to take care of the residuals. So it was a really good meeting, and I actually did write a short note, I don't know if that was shared with everybody or not, but at the end of the meeting, we agreed that he's now all set and he better understands GU's goals and needs. He said that he didn't have any issue with this current procurement that we actually went through. And then we also agreed that GU would work with McVac and share long-term scheduling, and he knows that we're also working in looking for any help he has to advise us on how to make sure we have a good, nice, simple product that we can bid to do this as cheaply as possible in the future. So it was a very good discussion.
Okay, with that, I'll open it up to the council. Questions or comments? Councilor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to break this down, real simple if I can. So I understand the whole process in it, though, so it's almost like I have a pen that somebody, that I have, but I don't need to keep it there. I'm just making it as simple as possible. But now I have somebody that can come and take it and make better use for it, because I don't want it to sit here on my table. So, with that said, we're paying for the services with all these permits and everything to remove this pen. With that said, is there any benefits in some way, like we, it's for them to come and take the pen? Because they're actually getting a supply from us, from this pen, in order to create something that they're gonna make use of and get revenue for. So that's what I'm looking at, is this like, kind of hand-in-hand? You know, evens out in some way, we're paying them, but they're also, you know, getting a product? You know what I mean? I mean, it's like, even though I don't want it, it's still mine. So is there some, do we find that the numbers kind of even out, like what we're gonna pay, all these permits we're paying, so forth and so on, and then they're gonna produce a product that they're gonna make monies on? What's the benefit to us? I mean, yes, I'm getting rid of a pen that I don't want, that's a huge benefit, but I was just wondering, in that, is there a hand-to-hand? There's a discount, you get some revenue off of the product, or anything like that?
Well, I do know that we, what we were spending, what we are spending in this resolution was equal to the amount that we were planning on spending just to move it to our own drying beds. So there wasn't a significant cost difference at all that we could ascertain by doing it one way or the other, so the decision was to just to spend the money once, to get it all the way to where we needed it to go, instead of moving it for the same amount to where we'd eventually have to move it anyway.
Right. But even better probably for us, because we don't have the aluminum settling into our watershed, so it's a huge benefit. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, lastly, Danny? Counsel, I would like to introduce you to Danny Bakura.
Danny.
Danny is my recommendation to be the next clerk in the, for the city of Groton. So with that, Danny, if you could introduce yourself?
I am Danny Bakura, and I have applied for the position of city clerk. With shadowing Edward a little bit and speaking with previous clerk, Megan, I think that I would be a strong candidate for the position and a good fit. I loved reading the job descriptions, and I thought, well, if there's ever a job for me, this would be it.
Okay. Then I'll open it up to questions, comments. Deputy Mayor Depot, and then I'll come to Councilor Sheffield.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for applying. We've had a few clerks in the last several years, and they've all had good reasons for moving on. You know, Megan was provided an opportunity out of the blue that she could not pass up, and Edward was provided an opportunity to be on town council. Do you see this being a long-term job for you, or how do you view this position for yourself going forward? Because as a council, it is a bit frustrating that we've had such turnover, while again, both of those people had, and Clerk Patrick retired, which is obviously also a reasonable reason to leave. So, you know, as a representative for residents, stability would be great in the position. So what are you hoping for, for your future in the job?
Sure, yeah, the transitions can always be difficult, there's always the, the learning curve that everyone has to deal with. I would see this a hundred percent long-term for me. I love the city and I would love to give back to it, and I don't, I don't foresee me having bigger and grander ambitions, not that I'm not ambitious, but I do think that I could master this position, and I don't feel like leaving until I do. And then I just, I, I think it would just be... I feel like I'm meant to take this position.
Councilor Sheffield?
Danielle, welcome. Do we have any resume or that we can review? Is there something?
I have one copy.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. And how long have you lived in the city of Groton? Have you?
I have lived here four years. I moved here from Italy, I lived in Italy for two years, and then it was San Diego before that.
So you've traveled the world and?
I did travel a little bit, but I set down roots here. I took advantage of being single and young and did my traveling, and now I found Groton, and I love it here.
Excellent, excellent. All right, thank you.
And, Councilor McCabe?
Hi.
Hi.
So my question to you is, having shadowed, like you said you did, watched the position, what experiences do you bring to the position in your past, other positions that you've had, that you think you'll be able to make this position your own from?
Yeah. A lot of my previous experience is heavy administration, it was asset management. I just think, I think I would really excel, and I think everything would translate really well. It's true, I've never been in a municipality-type position, it's all been from corporate, but I don't think that there's anything that's unlearnable. It's just the little languages that are gonna be a little different, but I think it's, I think once, once that's conquered, it's gonna be really quick. And the, the amount of administration that I had previous, I think would benefit the city. I can take on heavy loads and, and knock it out with very little error. Okay.
One of the things that we're gonna be doing is, if approved by council, I will swear her in tomorrow morning, and she will do the clerk's part until about the middle of June somewhere, and then Edward will continue doing the part-time of the admin assistant, and this will allow me an opportunity to overlap and actually get a turnover. Because typically, you don't get an opportunity to do a turnover. We didn't have a good turnover between Deb and Megan.
One of the things that we're gonna be doing is, if approved by council, I will swear her in tomorrow morning. And she will do the clerk's part until about the middle of June somewhere. And then Edward will continue doing the part-time of the admin assistant. And this will allow me an opportunity to overlap and actually get a turnover. Because typically you don't get an opportunity to do a turnover. We didn't have a good turnover between Deb and Megan. And then we had one day of turnover between Megan and Edward. So I'm trying to help fix that by giving the overlap, having them work together. And that way she'll be, one, she has training wheels for lack of a better term. But two, Edward will be able to turn over to her and it should be seamless.
Yeah. Quality, quality of work won't depreciate then.
That's correct. Counselor, oh, did you already ask your question?
Well, I started off, but I'm not sure if anybody else...
Well, okay. Counselor Carter?
I, I've seen you the past several meetings. So I appreciate the fact that you've come here. It's not easy being on the, on the hot seat, right? So, you know, so I commend you and I, I thank you for wanting to be a part of this. But, so I don't have any questions for you, so to speak, okay? Um, my question's for the mayor. Do, so how long would this appointment be? Was it, and, and is it considered an appointment? Or is it seeing that you're... I was kind of confused last time about how this, how, how...
Okay, let me see if I can clar, I'm gonna clarify.
So, you know, because an appointment would be through you, correct? From you. So does the charter say that we actually have to vote on it? Or is it just an appointment from you? And then if we have to vote on it, then why is it considered an appointment?
Okay.
And I have another question after that, but you can go ahead.
I never called her an appointment, I don't think. But here's what the charter says. This is under Article Five, Mayor and Council, under Section Four, Vacancies in Electoral Office. And it says, "Should a vacancy occur in the office of counselor or city clerk, an elector of the city shall be chosen by a majority vote of the council to serve in such office until the next regular election." So when we talk about the next regular election, I had a conversation with the attorney on Friday. And my interpretation was that Danny is filling Megan's spot and would not need to be voted on until 25. The attorney's opinion, based on CGS and precedent, is that she needs to be put on this year's slate and then will be voted on this year. And if she's elected, then she will still have a four-year term. So the council will still have a two-year term, the clerk has a four-year term. Four-year term, if you look in the charter... Let me get this real quick. Every four years during an election, a municipal officer in the city, a city clerk shall be elected to a four-year term. I argued to the attorney that I felt that she was filling the rest of the four-year term. And he went on, he focused on the next regular election as opposed to a special election or anything like that. Plus, our charter currently does not differentiate. So when it says vacancy at the next appointment, it could, they're talking about council, which is two years. Or it could be for the clerk, which is a four-year term, but it doesn't say that. So therefore, he said, according to the CGS and Connecticut General Statute, excuse me, and other precedents that he's seen, his interpretation is that Danny needs to be on this year's election and then her four-year term will start from there.
So, so this is, so this is what, this is what I have an issue with. And it has nothing to do with you because I don't know you, right? It's, it's, it's more of the party, right? And us voting, right? And the reason why I said appointment is because, um, what's your last, how do you pronounce your last name?
Bakura.
Bakura. Ms. Bakura didn't come to us, to the council. It was essentially you that brought her to the council. So that's why I said this is more of an appointment. So I, I have a hard time, and again, not, not you, because it could be anybody sitting there.
I understand.
I have a hard time voting for, for, or voting for a clerk that's going to continue a term that was essentially voted for, from, from the, our constituents. So that's where I have a, a problem or issue with this. If, if, if it was, if it was, if we were in a situation where, um, she was serving until November, and then we left it up to the constituents and everybody else to vote on her.
That's what I just said.
Yeah.
I said the attorney said that I need to put the, I read you the sec, the section that talk about vacancies that says...
The next regular election.
Next regular election. And I said, my interpretation was to take it to, to fill the rest of Megan's term. But I said, the attorney said, due to his interpretation of this section and the Connecticut General Statute and precedent, that she would have to be on the ticket for November. So therefore, the term she's serving out is from now until November. And she will be on the slate of candidates that we run in November.
And that's, and that's what, and that's, that's what I'm saying. We're essentially evolved for her to be on the slate when we, there's other, there's other, there are other, there, there are other, um... There are other, um... Yes, there's other potential candidates and there's people that have, that we as candidates, we have to go through a certain phase to be on the slate. So us voting for the would-be constituents or even the, the Democratic City Committee, to me, that doesn't make much sense when I don't know her.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, and I'm not done yet.
Okay, please, continue.
Well, I don't know her and a lot of the Democrats or the people who vote for us don't know her. So that's why I said this is, it's more of an appointment in my book, especially when the last two candidates have, have, whether you call it better opportunities or wherever, they quit. So do we get into another, another third situation? Especially when we, we don't know kind of what, and again, I, I'm trying to do my best around insulting anybody because it's not you. It's just the process of how we're doing this, but this is all new. We've had a candidate, we've had a clerk for years and we have not been in this situation. We have two clerks that have quit, right? And I just don't want to be in a situation where we have another clerk to, to, to quit on an appointment, which it is an appointment, that was brought to from the mayor and we haven't discussed it. That, that, that's where I'm coming from, you know? So, so you're gonna pass, but I'm gonna, I'm not, I'm not gonna not vote for you, right? But I'm just gonna, you know, I'll recuse myself from the, or abstain from the vote, just, just because of that, you know? But good luck.
If you want to consider an appointment, if that makes you feel better, then I'm okay with that.
Well, because of...
Well, let me, let me, let me, let me finish. Danny, I'm asking the council to approve her and she will be the clerk until November. This is, she does not, she did not know until just now that she has to run. This is new news. I have not, she will, I will need to bring her to the nomination committee of the GCDC. And if there's anybody else that wants to run for clerk, then they will go through the vetting process of the GCDC to get on the slate for November.
Okay, but you didn't say that though, until I mentioned it.
I never got, I didn't get to that point.
No, you said that she, she has to get on the slate to be on for the, to the entire, that's what you just said.
That's fine.
And then I stated that we have to go through a process. You just said it, that, you just stated. So if that's the, the, the process, that's good. That'll actually give us some time to say, okay, you've been doing it for the last this much. You're our, you're our, or, or clerk. And that's what I'm aiming for, you know, and if that's the case, I'm all for it.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just wanted to make a comment about the charter because I, I did look at the charter. In addition, I believe, because how long ago was it that Counselor, I mean Clerk Jacom gave his notice? It was several weeks, right?
Yeah.
Because I, I think at that time, you did make an announcement that we were looking for a clerk. So I would hope if any counselors or if anyone had any candidates that they thought, that they would have come forward by this time. So I do feel that time was given. Additionally, all of the, the Democratic slate, including all of us, all have to go through the, the process of nominations through the party. And again, if there's any other candidates that want to throw their hat in the ring at their ti, at that time, that would be when... But to me, this is a very clear process of the charter. We do have to vote on it because the charter says so. And, you know, the, the committee, the whole meeting is our chance to ask all the questions. And I had another question and I forgot what it was. But I think, you know, looking at the resume, you know, the job is really admin-heavy and maintenance of records. So to me, also working in kind of like a different, I worked in insurance, which is, again, not the same as municipal, but there's like a lot of similar parts of it. So to me, having to follow real estate laws and rules, to me, that makes sense to translate because I know a lot of my insurance experience, I feel like we all pull from our private sector experience and it kind of connects certain ways in different departments. To me, I think that will be an asset in that department because it will make sense, all the laws. And I think our last clerk also had legal experience, which made his transition, you know, the learning curve easier. So I think it makes sense. I haven't had anyone else come to me and offer to be the clerk. So I think also with no other candidates on the horizon and Ms. Bakura has shown that she's been coming to meetings. So she's seen what the job is, because that's the other thing that I was worried about, like the person knowing what the job is. Because it's not for everyone, I think. So I think that's probably, like, to me, that makes my vote easier because I know that you've been in the office, you've talked to the other employees that you'll already be working with, so, yeah. That's all.
That's, that's fine. I'm glad you cleared that up though, because I, that changes my way I'm gonna vote, you know what I mean? I, I'm for you, you know what I mean? But if we have to reevaluate, like, to me, that, that's like an on-job training now. You know what I mean? To, okay, to now you're our, our clerk, you know? So I'm, I'm all for it now.
Thank you. I'm, I'm happy to run in November.
Counselor Sheffield? Go ahead, Paul. Counselor Norris, you have the floor?
I, I'm sorry to break in right here. Just trying to understand, is the appointment of the city clerk any different than filling a vacancy with the city council?
No.
Kind of feels the same.
It's the same. According to the charter, it's the same. Did that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Sheffield?
Danielle, I assume you, are you a registered Democrat or independent or?
A Democrat.
Okay. Why don't you kind of clear that up? Because I guess if you're gonna be part of the party, we want to just make, get that clarified. And secondly, Mayor, I think, like I said, this resolution that I hear preliminary does say appointment. Is that, does that have to change now if we're not? Because Counselor Carter did make a correct assessment to where this resolution does say appointment.
Okay, we followed the same resolution that we did for Counselor Jacom, so that's the wording.
So we're gonna stay with that?
We are going to stay with that.
It's only appointments. We're just voting on the appointment.
Well, that's, the thing is, it stipulated, like I said, we're voting on it. But it's, like I said, as Counselor Carter said, it's not technically an appointment of our candidate. So that's why, that's why he brought it up to where, that's why I see the wording on the resolution.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council Meeting of 41723.
So moved, second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Danny, we'll see you in a couple of minutes. Okay, I will take a motion to, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, we have, we have a motion to a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, we can go straight in or would you like to have a five-minute recess?
I need a little five-minute recess.